All right, it's 6:30 and I'm calling the May 7th Planning Board Meeting to a order. My name is John Kruegerberg and I'm the Chair. Present here is John Randlett, the Vice Chair, Mike Ahern, John Kelly, the Selectment Representative, Rhonda Bishop, Paul Wilson, and our Town Planner, and here also is Bert Supcliff. That means that we have a full voting board. We also have our Ultimate, Jack Scarborough, sitting at the table with us. Moving along, are there any comments from the public?
No, the public is here.
Okay. Moving along, we have the approval of the minutes from April 16, 2009. We received a draft copy in our mail. And I'd ask if anybody has any comments on the first page. On the second page. I'd like to just ask for clarification on the item number one, subitem number four, to request a time extension. That the time extension is not to be extended beyond October 19th. It reads right now to request a time extension of the approved subdivision currently slated to expire October 19th. They were asking for an extension of their coming to the Board for the meeting, not for an extension beyond that date.
Wait, wait, wait. Just one clarification on moving this. Okay. What it is, is it says to review the following options, and there were four options that we were going to review.
So the three bullets are not part of option number four.
Right. Those should be bumped out. Okay, that's the problem, because there were three options. And then she made a request for a continuance of us to consider those four options. So yes, it should be bumped out.
Hey, we usually get a date certain for when a continuance would be four. We did not get that.
We didn't get that, because we only got a letter from her. So she wasn't here, and there isn't no way to clarify that, because when I tried to clarify it, she wouldn't clarify it.
Well, does the Board want to keep this in limbo and so that we can just expect her to possibly, or for the applicant to show up before October 19th? Or do we want to request that she be more specific about would you like to have these four options discussed?
Can we discuss it right now? In the minutes?
We should discuss it later. Good point. So we pulled those three bullets out?
We'll pull a four, because it doesn't go under four. That's misleading.
Okay. Would anybody like to move approval of the minutes as amended?
I make a motion to accept them as amended.
It's moved by Mr. Randlett and signed by Mr. Ahern. Any further discussion on the minutes? All in favor of approving them as amended? Say aye. I oppose. So that passes. Moving on to item number five, correspondence. Turn that over to the Town Planner.
The only significant correspondence we got was concerning the batch elder case. There was a motion to extend the briefing schedule. So the briefing schedule has been moved by a month. So previously, it was going to be that the batch elders needed to submit their brief by May 1st, and now it's June 30th, and the opposing brief needed to submit by June, and now that's been extended to August. So the new dates are, okay, two months. The new dates are June 30th and August 3rd for the town to submit their brief. And the request for the extension was proposed by Lowe's Attorney, by DeMonte. So that was granted.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six, reports of committees. The first before the, from Mr. Kelly, if there is one from the Board of Select.
As you probably all know, and it has nothing to do with the Planning Board, Mike Keith is no longer with the Town Planner. And we have been discussing and forming a committee to start looking into a new fire station, co-location and so forth. And I think it's what, May 30th that Charlie wants? Yeah, Charlie wants to have a definite answer as to the site, where the site will be by May 30th.
Right, so we had our first organizational meeting by, where?
May 30th? That's right around the corner.
May 30th. That's just the site.
Just to determine this.
Well, yeah. From what I saw on TV, they had, what, two possible sites?
They've got two or three.
Thank you. Conservation Commission, Mr. Wilson?
There's nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. The North Country Council Transportation Committee, Mr. Kelly or Ms. Baker?
Right. I went to that. It was at April 15th in Bethlehem. And what they went over was their regional transportation plan. So North Country Council wants to come up with a regional transportation plan, and we were going through it sort of chapter by chapter. There's going to be a chapter about air travel, like airports. And then there'd be a chapter on rail, and then one on bicycles and pedestrians. And then we also got an update on transit update, that they want to look at having some system for mass transit, and the way that they're doing is sort of vans and ride sharing. So, and then they talked about Transport Central in Plymouth, and that there was a grant for the feasibility study, which will allow Transport Central, which is based here in Plymouth, to hire a consultant to do a study, to see the feasibility of having some kind of mass transit system.
Yes, Mrs. Scarborough?
Just by way of conversation, I'm curious about our involvement with the North Country Council, as opposed to being involved with the Lakes Regions Commission, having really more relativity to Plymouth as opposed to Berlin.
We are the southernmost community in the...
Yes, we are. Well, actually, Rumney. Rumney is. But I just, I would like to pose that as a question to the Board to consider.
But it's not specifically about transport? It's just our authority?
No. General, why are we in the North Country?
Okay, let's put that on an agenda as a discussion I have for the future. Mr. Kelly?
I was just going to say that we've already discussed that. And I believe that Rennie probably could give us some light on that when the time comes.
Yeah.
But we've already discussed that, saying that we should stay with the North Country Council.
Do you feel prepared to discuss that tonight? We can put that in the meetings.
Well, actually, I would, and with the Board's permission, I would like to put it on the agenda, because I would like to look at Lakes Region. I agree, Mr. Scarborough. I've been studying it and weighing the two, but I would like to get a direction from the Board if this is something they would like me to pursue, because all of our surrounding communities, Holderness and Ashland, they're all in Lakes Region, and we need to know what's going on in those communities. For example, the, I think I did bring this up before. Yeah, the ice hockey rink. And so we didn't necessarily know anything about it, because it's happening in Holderness, and Lakes Region would know all about it. But we found out about it sort of by accident, because DOT didn't realize that it was in Holderness and not in Plymouth, and so they contacted us. So that's one example. But other things, you know, like what's happening in Ashland, what's happening in the communities that surround us and affect us, we don't know. The one that we'd miss out on would be Rumney, because Rumney is North Country Council. But since we've really had more commercial development and development period coming out of the other communities, Holderness and Ashland and those areas more to the south, I think it would be helpful. Also, in Lakes Region, they're doing a corridor 25 plan, that I'd like to see how that goes, because that impacts us. I have been going to the North Country Council meetings and just weighing it, because we were going to postpone it a little bit, just to see how the North Country Council panned out. But they basically talk about things north of a notch, you know, Fraconia notch. They're talking about Berlin, what's happening up there, and Fraconia, Bethlehem, and all those communities.
Littleton. Why don't we move this to a new business? But I will entertain this conversation.
I believe the feeling of the previous Board was that we had more in common with the North Country Council than we did the Lakes Region because of Guilford and some of the so-called richer towns, that I think the Board felt that we really wouldn't get a fair showing if that is representation, where at least the previous Board said that with the North Country Council, we had more in common with them by being smaller towns and so forth.
Okay. Let's come back to this item a little bit later.
Okay, so should I put it on then as agenda item, and we'll do it, you know, next work session or something?
Yeah. Would you like some time to sort of prepare some information for us for that?
Sure.
Okay. And also, I think we'd all like to know sort of the history of what governing bodies make these kinds of decisions. Is it planning versus Board of Select, the Select Board, and sort of those kind of questions Anything else from the Transportation Committee or the Regional Transportation Plan?
Nope, that was...
Okay. Then you still have the floor in terms of zoning board adjustment.
Right, okay. So zoning board adjustment met on Tuesday, and the agenda item concerned Plymouth Commerce Park, and that was the sign. Now, if you remember, for a town meeting, we put on an amendment to allow for a directory sign, because our zoning ordinance doesn't cover directory signs. It just says you'll have one freestanding 100 square foot sign per lot, so even if you have multiple businesses. So we proposed, the Planning Board proposed that amendment to allow some flexibility if it's a directory sign, brought it to town meeting, and that did pass. This sign at Plymouth Commerce Park actually installed it prior to town meeting, and their sign was actually larger than the 100 square foot. So we sent it to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, since they erected it prior to town meeting. The Board of Zoning Adjustment did grant that variance, so you'll see that that signs up there will be remaining. And it's a directory sign, and as I said, I think it was only 28 square feet in excess of our ordinance. But they did follow the variance criteria of hardship and unique circumstance, because of, there's a berm, and you really can't see it, and then the number of businesses, and then the speed that the traffic travels at that point.
Okay, thank you. Village Water Sewer District Source Protection Committee, Ms. Bishop?
The only thing that's really not pertaining too much with planning, but just town notification that they're going to be flushing the fire hydrants on May 27th, 28th, and 29th, and they're going to be doing this from midnight until 6:00 a.m. in the morning. And the listings, I guess, they posted it at the library and here at the town hall, if anybody is concerned about when and where. And the only other suggestion that they had brought up was that after the flushing, that you might want to use your outdoor spigot and flush that out first, because if there's any sediments that get riled up while they're doing the flushing, that you can let it out there instead of getting it into your system, your faucets.
That sounds like good advice.
And that's it.
Thank you. The Pema Juwassit River Local Advisory Committee report, Mrs. Scarborough?
Yes. I recently was appointed by the DES Commission as a member of the committee, and was elected as Vice Chair. And all I can offer is that it is developing a master plan, and affects the flow of the river from Profile Lake to Franklin, where it converges with the Merrimack. So all of the tributaries that are involved, that impact the flow of the Pema Juwassit and its water quality, which of course flows through downstream Plymouth. And if I may, just not to usurp, but jump ahead, Newfound Lakes Region Watershed Protection Committee, I would like to defer to Brian.
Close.
Boyd.
Boyd, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I figured it was one of the two of us.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So we'll act on that deferral and move on to number eight under six, the Town Planner.
There was an Office of Energy and Planning, their annual, I guess it's semi-annual meeting, on Saturday, May 2nd. And Jack Scarborough went, Rhonda Bishop, John Randlett, Bert Supcliff, and then Robin Peters also went from the Zoning Board of Adjustment, because it's also open to Zoning Board of Adjustment, and myself. And they had a number of workshops. I don't know if we have time, if everyone wants to just talk about what workshops they went to. But the workshops I went to was I went to recent court decisions and legislation, so that brought me up to date on all the new legislation that was going on. I also did improving your site plan regulations, and I did a, the last one was on flood plan regulations. And with improving site plan regulations, it actually ties in with the meeting that I had today with Ray Gosney with the Energy Committee. And so we're looking at reviewing the site plan regulations, and I'll make a proposal. But a lot of times, we talk about being dark sky compliant, and yet our site plan regulations doesn't really say a lot about being dark sky compliant. So what I'd like to do is just come up with some standards for dark sky compliant, so that when somebody shakes his head and says, "Yeah, I'll be dark sky compliant," he'll understand what exactly we mean, that there's an actual regulation, you know, there's a number of foot candles they shouldn't exceed, and just specify it a little bit more. So I met with Ray Gosney on that, and we're on the same page. And the other thing was with flood plan regulations. We got brand-new flood zone maps, and we got those, they're dated February 2008. So the assumption is we got new maps, that they were updated. But what I learned at this meeting was they weren't updated, they just gave us new map with a different background. So what they did was, they did this airplane flyby, and we have photometrics, okay? So they set the same information on top of the photometrics. And what I was curious about was the Baker River, and we all know about the Lowe's property, and it shows part of that property when it goes back in the floodway. And so I was curious with the new map, is it still in the floodway? Because after major storm events, I haven't seen any flooding over there. And John Kelly pointed out to me that there was some stormwater improvements made over at the Smith Bridge, and since that time, which was maybe about 10 years ago, he hasn't seen any flooding. But it used to flood, but he hasn't seen any since DOT made these improvements over at Smith Bridge Road. So I brought that up to her, and to the lady that was doing this flood plan regulation, and she said we could request a map adjustment. But even though they gave us the new updated maps, they don't have any funding to update it unless we specifically request this. So that was something that I sent her that email, and we might want to look at pursuing this, because it limits our amount of development if it's incorrect, and we're incorrectly saying it's a floodway, which means that the water travels right there, and it's not. So I'm not looking for any kind of, you know, getting around something, but I just want the maps to be accurate.
Is that, would that request typically come from a Planning Board or from a Select Board?
I don't know. I'll go investigate that, but I think that's a request that needs to be made.
Council of Land.
I'm sorry?
Council of Land.
Previously, conversations that were at the same meeting, the Planning Boards were identified as the bodies to raise these issues.
Right. No, I think, but perhaps the Planning Board raised the issue to the Select Board, and the Select Board...
Yes. Yeah.
Would anybody else like to make a report on any sessions that they saw that they feel pertinent to our edification?
I have one, but I left the documentation at home, and I would care not to talk about it until I had that in front of me.
Okay, maybe it's something that the Planner should distribute.
Yes, yes. And that was my point.
Okay. Since we're in the report section, I wanted to give people the opportunity to make a report. Anything else in the reports then? So then, moving on to item number seven, new business. We have one piece of new business, which is the Newfound Watershed Master Plan. Please come on up and maybe use yourself.
Thanks. Well, to the floor, that's so you folks can see, but I don't get on. My name is Boyd Smith. I'm the Director of the Newfound Lake Region Association. I'm based out in Bristol in Hampshire. My office is down about here. Someone, someone here. I want to thank the Board for having me up. I sort of came in or asked for about 15 minutes of time, I hope that's okay. Is that fitting? What I'd like to do is tell the group about a watershed master plan that we're working on, and this is news to me about Jack being on the parole averages. That's great. He's been showing up to a couple of our steering committees. If I digress a little bit. So myself, I'm the Director of the Newfound Lake Region Association. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. I've been there about three years. We're member-supported, have about 650 members, which I'm very, very proud to say, as of this year, includes five of the biggest towns that starve its population and land base in the watershed. So that's a first for us. Number of businesses, number of camps around the lake. Before I go too far down the road here, I do want to acknowledge, I may as well just talk to the map for a minute. This is the area I'm talking about when I say Newfound Lake Watershed, and I'm assuming that anybody here knows what a watershed is, but if you have any questions as I'm zipping along, please stop me and ask, I'd be more than happy. There's nine towns. Part of Plymouth is one, and frankly, Plymouth is this sliver of land up here, which is about 1,200 acres. It's really your high ground. It's on the other side of the ridge. Most of Plymouth is draining off towards the Pema Juwassit this way. You've got some conservation land up here, but I think if we've got a demographic count right, maybe there's a couple of dozen people. So as a governor to speak with you tonight, I'm thinking, well, these folks are going to look at that and say, why on earth should we pay attention? Why is he even here? But I think, I'll get into that a little bit more later, but quite frankly, the work that we're doing with a focus in a watershed, sort of district, a multi-town area, any town in this watershed and even beyond, our goal is that they can take some of the tools and science and suggestions that we're coming up with and apply them in the town. Clearly, the Pema Juwassit River is, you know, a central artery, a feature of the town of Plymouth, and I'm sure that's where your attention is. But hopefully, some of the things that we're learning and preparing in this geographic area will be of use to the town. So that's, as a watershed town, I wanted to give everybody an opportunity to know what we're working on, get engaged, and take, you know, whatever is of value for the town going forward. So we love this part of Plymouth, but I know it's really out of the hinterlands for most of your decisions. I've been going around to different boards and towns in the watershed, and there's five major towns that have 95% of the land and 99% of the people. And that's Alexandria, Bridgewater, Bristol, Hebron, and Groton. They're all rural communities. The biggest town is Bristol down here. They've got about 3,500 people in the population. There's a total of about 5,000 in the watershed. So the other four towns have 1,500 people scattered around. It's very, very rural. But as I've gone around to the different boards, the Select Boards, Planning Boards, and Cons comps to sort of say what we're doing and trying to get feedback, I've just really come to appreciate and admire the work that you folks do. I don't think anybody gets paid except for maybe Mariam, and it's volunteer work, it's hard, it's huge responsibility, and I just recognize that, and I want to acknowledge it back to you. The other thing that was interesting, and this is about my 12th board meeting in 12 nights or 14 nights, but I've been working on this project with a project team for almost three years now from the proposal stage, and we're in the last six months, and we're in the report-writing stage, which is why I wanted to come out and let Boards know, so you can get in on reviewing drafts and commenting on drafts. And I'll touch on that schedule report closer, we have that information clearly in hand. So myself and my project team members, we're way out in front. You know, we think we've got the best things in sliced bread, and everybody's going to buy into it, and what a wonderful thing that we've done. And as I go around to the Boards, the question that keeps coming to the top is, why are you doing this? Why? Which blew me away, I mean, isn't obvious. And basically, then, how are we going to add this to our already overwhelmed lives? How are we going to add this tome of information into our... I'm hearing priorities. What are the priorities? And then I'm saying, well, we don't have resources, you know, time, staff, et cetera. So I have a bunch of information in the watershed, and actually, I will hand this stuff out to you guys, because it gives some background. But what I'm going to try and focus on is really some more of the why and what's floated to the top. Perhaps the things that'll be more useful and give some context for this project. On one side, with the color logo side, we've got sort of an outline of schedule, and I'll touch on that, because some of the dates have firmed up. On the backside is sort of factoids about the master plan, so you can get a sense for the size of it. We have a project team that is led by the NLRA, it's nonprofit, but we've got some really key people on the job, and some I know you'll know. Steve Whitman of Jack Taylor &amp; Associates, and I'm sure most of you know who he is and work with him. He's our planner. Working a lot with PSU, in particular Brian Eisenhower with the Center for the Environment, who've done a couple of major elements, a huge community survey, some oral histories with their history department with Marshup.
Smith Lane.
Smith Lane, excellent. And PR assistance, which generated, oops, yep, another, some information from June Hammond Rowland and some of her colleagues. This is sort of more background. It may be more than you want, but use it and pass it on, or leave it up and lobby, or recycle appropriately. I think they did. Oh, it doesn't hurt everybody. Oh, you're good?
Yeah.
We missed one here.
Oh, I'm sorry, John. Thank you. Yeah, I thought you counted on. And so anyway, so we've got a great, a great project team. This is an EPA-funded project under their Anti-Kleen Water Act 319 funding for anti-degradation. So the reason behind all of this is essentially to prevent degradation of water quality. The state is also looking at watershed scale protection, realizing that, you know, water, surface water, groundwater crosses town boundaries. And so if you're looking at managing a natural resource, you have to work in an ecosystem in the case of a watershed. I mean, water resources, it makes us work in a watershed. That's all well and good, but we have multiple towns, and as you know, ten, each town has their own sort of governing body, and working together is a tough one. But we've got this 319 funding, a 30-month project, match from us. PSU's involved, UNH is involved, the local school district is involved. It's just a huge, it's $350,000 funded and matched planning program, I guess is what I'm trying to get at. And hopefully, by the end of the day, we'll come out with tools and information that will help any and all Planning Boards, especially when they're talking about what has to come to the top for, you know, land and water protection to maintain, you know, the quality and the, frankly, the economic value of the environment around us as we go forward. Okay, so the why, getting back to the why, when people ask me why, we, well, actually, Whitman looked at all the master plans and all the regulations of the nine towns in the watershed, and did analysis on essentially, what's the status... watershed and did analysis on essentially, what's the status of the master plans, is their commonality, also looked at the regulations and things like that. And one of the things that came out of that is all the master plans, basically, all the towns have a common vision. You know, we love, we love what we have. We love the healthy forests. We love the clean water. We love the rural care. All right. Then PSU, Center for Environment, Brian did a survey, went out to 2,000 people, about 800 back, a million questions, a huge, monstrous data set, and they came up with the same answer. Some of the things that floated to the top, people recognized water quality is something that they wouldn't compromise, and it's a common vision across towns. So, there's a common vision out there for the value of the environment. But the next thing that came out of that, or going back to Whitman's analysis of existing zoning regulations, land use regulations, is that there's a huge disconnect between the vision that's stated by the townspeople and the rules in place to assure that that vision is reached. Now, I don't know very much about your town, or really any of them, to that level of detail. My, my sense of what I hear is Plymouth is way out front in a lot of ways. If you're talking about a dark sky zone, even talking about it, you're ahead of most of the conversations that I've, that I've overheard. But in general, there's a huge, you know, the vision is up here, the, the rules to put those in place, called land use rule zoning, is down here. And then, in most of the cases, in this, you know, in the smaller towns, the enforcement capability is off the charts down, down below. So, there's a, there's a big disconnect between the vision and the likely reality as we move forward in time. So, that's a why for looking at, you know, at this, these issues. There's a shared economic, shared economy is huge, and I don't have many of these. They actually are out of print, but I'll give a couple to the board. It's this brochure, it's also online, too. You can find it at NewHampshireLakes.org. NHLakes.org. But there's basically, you know, a value assigned to recreational water use in the state of New Hampshire. And you break it out by regions. We're part of the Lakes region, but something like half a billion dollars a year in value for swimming, fishing, boating. A perceived loss in water quality, and that could be clarity, and it could be crowding, and it actually is also scenery, which is surprising. Maybe 30, 30-ish percent loss in jobs and income and revenues. So, maybe, this is probably no big surprise to the board, but there's a huge reason to take care of the environment, because that supports the economy. So, we, so sort of, that's a why should we do a master plan. There's clearly efficiencies in working across town boundaries when you're talking about planning efforts, again, at a trans-town scale and implementation, whether, some suggested we heard is a shared planner. Again, none of these towns, you know, those big five, Marion, have a planner. Far as I know, out of the nine towns in the watershed, only a dozen, you know, as you can see, you know, most of your focus is going to be elsewhere. And right, so. So, sharing the resources and collaboration is more efficient, more effective, and it's actually what's needed to work at this scale. Again, you know, you know what kind of barriers and way there to, to work among towns, where every town's got a select board, every town's got a planning board, most of them have a conscom. A lot of ours don't, yeah, ours, you know, don't have zoning ZBAs. I mean, you know, but everybody makes, and the towns vote at the level of town meetings if you're going to put an ordinance out. So, that's kind of, I don't, you know, there's a lot more things to say in detail, but there's just a heads up, there's two things, two more things I want to do, I guess that I can think of. And one is, I want to hear from, from this group, from your board, what sort of issues, in particular, well, land and water issues, you guys are facing, which will help inform us as we're doing our draft? And anything goes. I mean, just share, because we're in a position to try and at least address these, since we have some technical, technical expertise lined up in Utah. And then, before I left, I just wanted to go through this review schedule, because what I'm asking is that board members, and as many people as possible, know that we've got the first draft of this report coming out and how to find it, and then know that there's going to be an opportunity for review and comment. And we desperately need folks to look at it and give us our, their comments, so that it's a better document, and it's a document that gets customized to each town. I think we'll see common things pop up, but if, if it doesn't reflect the interests and the concerns of the communities that it's meant to work for, who wants to use it? I mean, it's got to have some personal meaning. So, I don't know what, what order, Mr. Chairman, if you have, you know, if you want to hear about sort of the review schedule, when there's opportunities to look at this document.
Definitely. So, do you have a, you have a date when your first draft will be out?
I do. And I think you can fill it in on the, it's on the, on the cover side, sorry, the color side of the sheet I handed out. There's a May date. May 22nd is the release date for the draft online. May 22nd. I think it's the second bullet down on that, that sheet. And then the June, there's no June date on that sheet, but June 15th, we're going to have a public meeting, public presentation. It's a Monday. It's going to be 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It will be at the Bridgewater Town Hall, which has got room for 100 people or so, and off 3A in Bridgewater. I will send, I'm going to send invitations, sort of thank yous and invitations out to all the boards that I spoke to, with sort of the summary of some of the key stuff that came to the top.
And advance of that.
But, May 22nd online, June 15th, a public presentation. Be great to have a board round. And then, we will have a couple of months over the summer when, when comments can still come in. We'll keep trying to push this out, with the goal of presenting the final watershed master plan September 14th. And then, it's on to sort of implementation.
So, just to clarify, you've given us a webpage address, so citizens could come into Town Hall, get on the computer, look at it, and give you feedback if they wanted.
Yes, yes, absolutely. That would be great. And I think, I can't remember for sure, I think we've decided to put at least the, there's going to be two volumes. I mean, one that's sort of the executive summary, you know, punch, 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 this is why you should care, this is what you can do, these are the core resources if you need them. And then, there's going to be a huge volume, too, that essentially has all the work in it, all the different reports. And I think we will probably have at least one hard copy of that, volume one, at some public location. And I don't know if the library is the best. Some towns, most of these towns don't have a library. Town hall, perhaps. So, it'll be online, I think, one copy per town initially. And as many people will look at it, give us comments, the better I remind you.
Okay. Just question from the town.
With the five major towns, how many of them have zoning ordinances?
I will say four. Alexandria is lacking, although I believe subdivision, it's not required, or that comes at the state level, or site, site plan review at the state.
Well, subdivision, I would, I think everyone has to have, but, but zoning, you think-
No zoning in Alexandria.
Okay, except Alexandria.
And Grotons is skeletal. They just put that in, in response to that, I don't know if you heard, the American Military Institute, you know, 700-acre live buttons training, you know. Recently and a couple of years ago, they put a, a one-year moratorium on any construction while they put it in essentially emergency zoning, which is as skeletal as it gets.
Okay. Also, does your draft plan include model language for a watershed overlay district?
Uh, hasn't yet. That's, I never sort of thought of it as a, I'd love if you can explain a little bit or steer me toward where I might find such a thing.
In the town of Plymouth, we have a, a number of overlay districts, like, one is our floodplain overlay district, and we have an airport overlay district. And what you would do with your watershed overlay district, if you drafted a model ordinance and included it in this document, is that these towns that have zoning ordinances could adopt it as part of their zoning ordinance. And that would mean that if development went, what we have right now, we have something called environmentally sensitive zone.
Yeah.
Okay. And that sort of bumps right up to the shoreline protection act. And I'm assuming Newfoundland Lake Falls under the shoreline protection act, right?
Uh, yeah. The whole, the whole lake does, all of Newfoundland River and a little bit of the main stems of these two big ones here.
Okay. So, so think of that concept of the shoreline protection act, which goes 250 feet from the edge of the water.
Right.
Our environmentally sensitive zone goes 500 feet beyond.
Okay.
But Plymouth is more than 500 feet away from Newfoundland Lake.
Right.
So, maybe we, if there was a, a model watershed overlay district, then we could look at that development that's, that's in Plymouth, and you would have stuff like a minimum lot size. So, if it was an overlay district, maybe minimum lot size would be, our regular minimum is one acre, maybe it would be two acres or three acres, whatever they feel is appropriate. And then, you know, limit the amount of septic tanks, you know, maybe you need a bigger lot for septic, any kind of, anything that would have a negative impact on the watershed, you'd have regulations on that.
Yeah, I think what I was struggling with is when I, you know, I'm thinking of watershed as, as everything, and I think of overlay districts as sort of distinct, unique, you know, maybe, these are aquifers, by the way, so, and greens are big conservation areas, but, you know, so having some sort of an overlay district over, you know, productive aquifer would make a ton of sense. When I think of overlay district over the entire, you know, watershed-
Okay. Yeah, yeah. You would have to grade it out, so you'd have to have a watershed, like, like we have with the airport. We have a Zone A, which is the approach zone, and a Zone B if it's more of the periphery, and a Zone C.
Yes, 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 yes.
So, with the, with the watershed overlay, yeah, of course, you'd have to segment it out. So, the ones, what were the purple areas called?
These are aquifers.
Yeah, aquifers.
Real, real productive stand and grow.
So, so that would be a Zone A, you know, the aquifer, you have to-
Yep.
-be most sensitive, and then, so, so you'd have a, a level of standards, maybe three or four levels.
I know one of the things that, you know, what we sort of talk about priorities, what's the most important thing. If there was one controlling thing on land use for water quality, it would be preserving vegetative buffers, and I've heard 25 to 50 feet, not just around, you know, the streams, but actually more the headwater streams. So, as you get up this third, second, first, or even the femal, but the, it's so steep around here, that when the water comes down, it comes down screaming fast, just really fast. So, vegetative buffers, I mean, that would be my watershed zone, if I could do that, but that zoning, I mean, that's going to be a buffer.
Okay, so, with your, okay, with your aquifers, those aren't covered on shoreline protection. Okay, so that's where the gap is. You have, you have your vegetative buffer required around Newfoundland Lake for 50 feet, you know, under, under shoreline protection.
Right.
Okay. But, but the thing that's missing is the streams that come into that that aren't protected by shoreline protection.
That seems to be the big one.
Yeah, so that's-
Groundwater.
Oh, and groundwater, too. Well, yeah, okay. Yeah, so, so that would be, you know, just think of that shoreline protection model for the overlay district, but you need to apply it to the, the incoming streams, and then what, what Jack was saying with groundwater.
Any ideas how to do that? I'm wide open. I mean, one of the things I'm finding, quite honestly, and I know, I'm sure I passed my 15 minutes, so show me if anything you need to. I lost, lost my, lost my train of thought, so you're safe. Save the time.
I think we did a good job answering the second item that you said you want, of the two things you wanted to make sure. The other one was, what issues are we facing that would affect your rating of this? And I think the planners probably already addressed that. Is there anything else that, any, any issues affecting Plymouth that would affect their writing of their master plan?
Or, if I may clarify, anything affecting Plymouth that we can somehow try and help you address or put into the mass, the watershed master plan that would be useful to you?
All right. And as I said, if, if you guys come up with an overlay watershed district plan, I could see us, you know, looking at that and seeing if it makes sense that we add one overlay district. Of course, it doesn't affect, you know, it's 12,000 acres, and I, I guess there's not any aquifer in Plymouth, right?
Well, not up here. I guess what I'm thinking, if, if you're thinking overlay district, watershed district for, for Plymouth, most of the action is going to be for, you know, outside of, outside of our service area. And I'm not sure how, again, if I'm thinking-
Right, that's what I'm saying, like, the 50-foot buffer doesn't affect Plymouth at all, because we're way beyond that, and we're way beyond, you know, 500 feet from, from Newfoundland Lake. And if there's any tributaries in there, and you had-
But if you use the language that he develops, it could be applied elsewhere in Plymouth on those issues.
Right.
Oh, I see.
That's, that's what I'm trying to think. If you've got stuff that's happened, really, the majority of your town.
Okay. Yeah, what we have right now is an environmentally sensitive zone, and it covers Loon Lake, Baker River, and the Pembey-Jwasit River. But we, we don't have anything that covers tributaries that go into the Baker and that go into the Pemme. So, again, that would be, you know, if you guys did come up with a model watershed ordinance, then we could apply that to Plymouth for those other watersheds that we have.
I think we're on to that stuff. I mean, our focus is land use to protect water quality. Of course, the two are land. So, I think you'll see some stuff out of there. It may not, it may be as separate ordinances, but two or three pieces together, and you'll get at what you're talking about.
Okay, are there any other questions or issues to address?
Is there, is there any other, anything else that you're doing to help the towns to assist, like Bristol trying to get the sewer to the south end of the lake? Is there anything your organization did to help or can help in the future?
I'm sure the answer is yes to both, I think. I mean, I, I work fairly closely with the folks down in Bristol, and not in any, you know, small part, because I'm close to them, but also, that's the biggest town, most is going on. Back in my other career, I used to be in the environmental remediation and monitoring. So, I did sampling, I ran a sampling, ran down here, sampling culverts at the south end of the beach, south end of the lake, which is their public beach, and they paid for the analysis of DES, and they put together a water quality report, which basically showed them rains like crazy, the water quality out of, you know, out of the tribs and out of the sewer, storm drains, and it's horrible. We also, as part of our watershed master plan work, UNH went out and did a deepwater sampling for years, but they did three rounds of, I think, about 30 samples per round of much closer to shore e. coli sampling, as well as for monitoring for algae growth development. So, we've got nearshore data down at this end that we're able to feed to help inform this discussion of sewer to the lake. I mean, one of my old questions has been, what's the problem before you throw 30 million bucks at it? Moving forward, I think that one of the things we'll look at in the next step, if we get funding for it, is creating some sort of a demonstration project, maybe showing the value of low-impact development. And the south end, which is the town beach, is a really high-profile and value candidate for that sort of work, if we can pull that together. And then, I think, working with them on, you know, communications and continue sort of education and outreach will be an ongoing thing.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah. Follow up.
Yeah.
Do you think that what you said, the development and the zoning, is what stopped possibly any funds from the Stimulus Act to go towards that sewer project? Was it zoning, or was it just that they have dragged their feet?
They were.
They don't have anybody special-
They're not even close to shovel-ready for that. Not even close to shovel-ready.
Wouldn't you anticipate that?
I don't, at this moment. I don't think it's going to happen in the foreseeable future. I think this plan was conceived when they thought they'd get 80% funding on a $150,000 project, and it's now they're looking at maybe 30% funding on a $30,000 project.
So, you've got all those close knit houses, all in the south end of the lake, they're all sitting there, and for 15 years, they've been saying, well, five years, we could have sewer coming to the lake, and they're all putting out all the major repairs for their septic systems, thinking it's down the road, when it's not helping the lake at all, to keep putting that little carrot in front of them that's never going to exist.
Yeah, that's, that groundwork, I hear what you're saying. That groundwork got laid before my time, but I will tell you that all that shallow, I mean, they were sampling in less than 10 feet of water, those three miles of 30, and the e. coli, I don't think they looked at, I think the e. coli was essentially the same as the deep lake average. And that tells me that, you know, you're not sampling in the right place, or there's so much flushing that it's not an issue, or it's not a problem. And personally, we've said we will bring the data and try and be an objective, but when I look at that, I think if you go out and test every one of those septics and then make the decision about what has to be done before you throw a shotgun and incredibly expensive thing on it, that's me personally.
Boyd, could I ask you a question? What's the actual turnover?
Oh, flushing time in the lake?
Flushing time in the lake?
It's something in the neighborhood of once every.
72 hours?
No, no, it's once every several years.
Oh.
And I've heard things like twice a year. It's not, it's not that fast, it just isn't. And, of course, with flushing is, you know, 75% of the water comes in from these two streams. It's, you know, that lake in the center, half that lake's 100 feet deep. So a lot of it is happening on the top, you know, as far as the seasonal stuff.
Okay.
It's not like a river, it's a lake.
Ms. Bishop, do you have a question?
The only thing that I'd like to know is if they're still rated one of the cleanest in the Northeast.
Yes, yes. One of the ways they measure that is with phosphorus concentration, and we've got four parts per billion, phosphorus is a 10-year median, and the state is just lowering the standard from sort of the middling clean to cleanest, from 10, you know, parts per billion to eight. They're in the process of that discussion right now. So we're about half of the state's standard, you know, so short answer is yes, still very clean. But we are seeing some changes. I mean, you have a lot of deepwater monitoring, 23 years in a row, this location down here, which I think I mentioned earlier to the group, is not as clean as the rest of them, and it's not as clean as it was 20 years ago. It's downstream, it's downwind, and that's the most adult part of the lake, so we're seeing some changes down there.
Any other questions? Yes?
I'm assuming in the winter it totally freezes over, right?
Uh, yes.
Pretty much?
Yes.
And then when you have ice out, does it flip?
It does, I can't remember the time that it flips, but it does have a, there is very strong stratification at about 30 or 40 feet, and it does turn over.
Okay.
Once, maybe twice a year, I can't remember, at least once a year. Could close.
All right, well, it looks like we don't have any more questions, but thank you very much for your time and your presentation.
Thank you very much for having your open attention input. Please review and comment if you have the opportunity as we move along here. If ideas come to mind, please let me know, we'll do anything we can to make this product as useful as we can.
And I assume that we can have a copy of this, you know, at the front of the town hall, if anybody watching tonight wants to come and check out these things on these web pages?
Yes, yes. Oh, now, reminds me of one other, one other comment. I meant to put it under my communication, but on May 21st, normally we televise all of our meetings, we might not be able to have that televised, but I will have the minutes available, they'll be available within five business days, and everyone's free to call my office after the meeting and find out what occurred. It's just regarding some technical issues on May 21st that we might not be able to televise it. And the same thing with anything that anyone sees at any of the meetings, like including this, they can just call my office and I'll have it available.
That actually is an appropriate place because we just say we've already moved into item number eight, which is unfinished business. So that was an unfinished message from you. And then the issue of other business, I think this is where Mr. Ahern suggested we move the continuation discussion of the continuation of Ivy Lane. So usually, in my experience on the board, is that when somebody comes and asks for a continuation, they say till the next meeting or till next month, and we just didn't get that. We just asked for a continuation without any sense. Is that something that we feel that we should ask for a date certain, or should we just, I mean, they do have until October 17th, I think it was, to come to, come before us. I mean, nothing expires by them, not coming here.
Well, their subdivision will expire.
No, I'm saying as long as they.
Oh, right.
No, if they don't come next month or two months.
Right, right, right. No, what, the history on this was that it was not town-initiated. Heidi Smith and Jason Smith, they wanted to come before the planning board, so it was self-initiated. So, right, you know, we let them know that it will expire at October 17th, they understand that if they don't want to come to us, then it will just expire. If they want to come to us, as long as it's before October 17th, that's.
So maybe we didn't use the right language by talking about continuance because they weren't under any time pressure.
Correct, that was the language that came from Heidi Smith, because she originally wanted to be on the April agenda, and then she submitted a letter, she said, I cannot be on the April agenda, can I request a continuance?
So she has removed it and she's welcome to come before us anytime, if October 17th on any of these.
Right.
Did we use the word continuance because there was notification of a butters? Was it a public hearing at all, or no?
No, no, there was no notification, so maybe the wrong term was used, maybe she just sort of said, I want to withdraw, and then she could just reapply, but it wasn't a formal application either, so that's why I, it's probably not the correct term, she just wanted to get direction from the planning board. So there's no application filed, there's no subdivision site plan, asking for an extension, nothing has been filed.
Okay, so I think the minutes for this meeting could reflect that we understand that continuance isn't because there's a deadline that's at stake, but it's just that it was withdrawn and the applicants welcome at any time to come back before the board. One item of other business that sort of came up earlier, but we had a previous meeting, was that issue of the non-recording secretary, and when we met with the joint meeting with the ZBA and the town attorney, that attorney clarified for us that we do have the right to create that title and make somebody be that, have that position if we wanted to. So I didn't know if.
But don't they, don't they have to have a recording secretary too?
Yes, and we have, we have this recording and the town planner also is recording the notes too, but in terms of the ability of the planning board to create various titles for.
Oh, yeah, you can create any title you want, but you have to have your three officers, you have to have your chairman, vice chairman, and a secretary.
Because every meeting has to be recorded, so they have minutes, and we have that.
That's right.
But we can have a non-recording secretary for some other title thing if we wanted. I don't know if this is issue is just dead, or if anybody wants to raise it from the dead.
No, I just, my idea of it was, you have to have the three officers, but you can have anything, or you could have an engineering or the maintenance of the light bulbs, okay, and create an officer for that, but as I understood it, you had to have your three, and this came from the government center, you have to have your three officers, and then you can have whomever you want.
So I think we do have, we all agree that we have those three positions covered, the chair, vice chair, and the secretary who's recording things.
Now, who's the recording secretary officially, not just somebody that records?
Well, wait, okay, let me just clarify one thing. A planning board does need to have a chairman, traditionally they have a vice chairman. In terms of somebody on planning board having to sit in the position of secretary, no, that is not necessary. Someone needs to be a secretary, but it could be a staff person. So I know that that was clarified by our attorney, that someone needs to record minutes, it doesn't have to be someone on the planning board. So the way that we have done it is we do contract at our minutes. So we have a professional service that does our minutes, and they take it from the DVD.
The, the, that other speaker was wrong, and she told us that you had to have a secretary there. I want to call you there.
When I talked to local government center, what they told me is someone needs to record the minutes, but it does not need to be an officer on the planning board, it could be a staff person. So it's just clarifying that, that someone needs to take the minutes, but it does not have to be planning board, it could be a staff person, or you could get a professional service.
Okay, I wanted to make sure we visit that since we did ask the attorney specifically about that, and I don't know, and we can open up the discussion if we want to have somebody as a non-recording secretary who would assume the vice chairship, should the vice chair be acting as the chair? And if that vice chair couldn't act as the chair, then that non-recording secretary could act as chair. Or we could just leave it up to somebody being appointed, not during the meeting, but if the chair and the vice chair couldn't be there, somebody would be contacted and asked to leave the meeting.
If that is not the case.
Which is not the case.
If there is not a non-recording secretary, any of the bylaws that I have participated in and been involved with indicate that the senior, next senior member of the board assumes the position of chair, or vice chair, or whatever.
And we'll define senior as experience on the board as opposed to age or something.
Or time, time, time on the board.
Is the board comfortable with using that type of logic?
Yes.
Okay, I think this is a word clear, I think that would be Mike Ahern, if Mr. Randlett and I could not be here. So, we have a job without the title.
Okay.
And then the last piece of other business that I have would be looking forward to, towards the future, of the discussion of North Country Council versus Lake Region Council. Does anybody else have any other business that they'd like to bring here? Yes?
This has, has nothing to do with the planning board, but we are officials of the, and I think there's going to be a lot of discussion in regards to a project that's going to go on within a very short time, and that is the South Main Street from, where?
From Court Street?
From Court Street.
To.
Down, down beyond Writing, and what they're going to do is they're going to reclaim, and maybe I'm using the wrong word, reclaim the road, they're going down an inch and grind up the pavement to take care of all the potholes and everything like that, and then they're going to come in and pave it. Now, where the crutch comes in is that there are some people in town that want to have the work done at night, and if the work is done at night, just the asphalt will go from 84, correct me if I'm wrong, $84 a ton to $150 a ton. That will, that will necessitate another $14,000. Beyond that, you will need banks of light, you also will need the people that are actually doing the asphalt and the grinding to have overtime, and also the asphalt plant will have to have overtime because it'll have to be open when they're going to be paving. I don't have a firm figure as to the total cost of it, but just the asphalt will be another $14,000 just for that. This will necessitate the road being closed for three days, and some of the people on Main Street are quite concerned about that, and I think there's going to be a lot of discussion in regards to that. So I'm just putting it out to the taxpayers of Plymouth that if they really, really want people to do it at night, and they feel that it's, that they can afford the $14,000 extra, then that's certainly okay, but we have, the Sleckmans have tried to keep everything in bounds, and in fact, the $26,000 that is going to cost, and because it is such a good deal, they've decided to do it, is not in the budget. But they have worked, each department has worked out a few dollars apiece, so they have come up with the $26,000. They have no idea how they would ever come up with the other $14,000. Now, the other thing is, now, the state decided they could do it at night?
The state said it's possible, but they're not going to bear the cost, the town would have to pay for the cost.
Yeah, okay. The other thing is, let's assume from curb to curb, there's this piece of paper, the state will come in and they will do the center path, and then where the parking is, how far is it?
The state's going to do 24 feet in the center, and then I think we have 10 feet and 10 feet on both sides.
What they're saying is, is that they do not know whether they can collate the pavement in the middle to the pavement on the outside. So what they'll do is they'll come in and they'll grind everything up, and then when they pave, they'll pave down through the middle of the town, of the road, and then sometime when they get a chance to, they will come back and they'll pave the sides of the road. That means there's a coal cut all the way down through, and anytime that you have a coal cut or two operations, you're going to have a good possibility of having cracks all the way down through there. So it's just something that I'm sure that people will be talking about, I'm sure they'll be asking people of the planning board and so forth, so.
Ultimately, it is a select board decision, right? Absolutely, because it's a word decision.
Yes, it is, but again, because we are the planning board, we are officials of the Sleckman, since I am a representative board, I, the Sleckboard, I thought it was proper that I bring that up now so that, so that there would not be, you know, people, there wouldn't be that disagreement there, and so I'm just saying that if some of the merchants on Main Street really get their way, it will cost the town of Plymouth another $14,000, and we have not got that money.
And I think it's a good use of the cameras that we have out there.
That's what I thought.
Do we have any idea when that would occur?
First part of June.
First part?
Yeah, early, early June, I mean, don't hold it to any specific date, but that was also another problem with trying to do it at night, because we're just one of many jobs. So when they, when they come up to Plymouth, that's at the time they're going to do it, they're looking at early June after the students have.
But they have, they have indicated it will not be a motorcycle weekend, it will not be a memorial weekend, it won't be on some other types of weekend.
And despite, despite the protestations of several of the downtown business people, my understanding is that it will only take about three days.
Takes three days, right. And the problem is that, I personally cannot understand what the big outcry is, because we had the traffic circle around about, and that end of town was torn up for over six months, and the merchants were good enough to get along and cooperate and everything like this, and in just two days, in June, after the students go home and everything like that, I'm not too sure as to how much imposition it might cause, whatever merchants that would affect.
And they will keep one lane open.
I'm not, is that right?
Yeah, that's what I've understood.
Yeah, that's what Pike Industries explained to me, that they're going to have a pre-construction meeting to go over it, but that's what he told me over the phone, that one lane would be kept open.
So it's passable.
Right, the other thing that people asked me about was, they said, well, what about Littleton? We heard Littleton did it at night. So I did call Littleton, I talked to their highway manager, I talked to their town, it's either a town manager or town administrator, and he assured me that Littleton has never done a project at night. He said that Littleton did look at their downtown project right now and doing that at night, people talked about it, but this is the redoing their whole downtown, and it's a six-month project, they started last month, they're going to continue all the way to November, they're tearing everything up because they're putting in new sewer pipes. Anyhow, even with them talking about it being at night, he said the costs were exorbitant. So what they compromised is that they're only working Monday through Thursday, and then Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, there's no construction done, and then that's when the downtown, you know, functions. So that was their compromise, they have not done it at night because it was exorbitant.
Okay, any other business then? Yes, Mr. Ahern?
I'd gotten a letter from the town assessor a month and a half ago, so, saying that I needed to update my current use application because of the new mapping process the town did, everybody's acreage or some people's acreage changed. Couple of my lots changed less than half an acre, and he still felt that I needed to reapply. And I said, all right, well, I showed up, and he had some paperwork filled out, and then found out after that each one of my lots I was going to have to pay a recording fee, which added up to quite a bit of money, and I was a little concerned about it, so. It seems to me that everybody's acreage changed on just about every single lot that they owned, and so I was concerned that if the town assessor was going to go around and require everybody to start rerecording things that were done back in the 1970s, and I made a couple of different phone calls after and told the town assessor that I was not going to pay any recording fees and was not interested in having my acreage changed for my current use, and he was a little surprised and said that, I asked him how many people he has had to record it, rerecord it in the 1970s when most people did it, and he didn't really have a number, but finally said, well, a few. And so I just wanted to bring that up to the Sleckman's representative to maybe have a talk with him.
I think we've had a lot of talk with him.
Yeah, the guy is, anyway, I just wanted to let people know, don't pay that fee, as far as this is me speaking, but maybe we can talk to someone else before he gets to anybody else.
All right. Any other comments? Any comments from the public?
Just to, we'd like to get on a little element, I'm on the Transport Central Committee, and I've gone up to several meetings with the state. The state is trying to quote coordinate a master plan for transportation, and also working with the regional, regional planning agencies such as North Country Council, Lakes Region, Lake Sunapee, and I attended a meeting here, I don't know, two weeks ago over in Hanover, and it turns out Plymouth is in the apex of all three planning, we're overlapped. So we have actually three planning, regional planning elements at our disposal. So, but they're still actually trying to reformulate the state as far as planning purposes for certain events, and the die has not been cast yet, as far as who's gonna be the, the regional planning director or controller of a particular area. So you're meeting your agenda item for which regional planning elements we should be the umbrella of, is not a bad idea. But right now, it's, I still haven't been able to formulate who's, who's in charge of this area, because they're actually talking about, for transportation, somebody, it's supposed to be like a nine-one-one for transportation, you pick up a phone, call a one-eight-hundred number, no matter where you're at in this area, it goes to a central dispatch, and a bus or a vehicle is launched. Well, right now, our buses for Plymouth and Ashland are gonna come from Hanover, which makes a lot of sense. So, you know, and we, of course, trying to get something here, our central area takes care of eighteen towns. This Plymouth Central Transport is taking care of the eighteen towns in this area. But however, it overlaps towns from three different regional planning departments. And the state's trying to coordinate this, so that we're all using the same computer program, the same administration, the same type of vehicles, same planning, so there's interoperability, and of course, cost savings, because we don't want duplication of service, and we don't wanna have buses riding around with no, nobody on board, which is quite bad. So the, this is still ongoing at the state level, so don't feel too bad if you haven't got a good grasp at the local.
Thank you. So maybe sign for Plymouth Region.
Well, if, if I may, please, John, that is one of the issues that is behind what I've suggested in joining Lakes Region, is that we are so overlapped. We're at the southernmost point of the White Mountain and Northern Country Region, but we're at the northernmost point of the Lakes Region. And yet, we don't have to speak of a quantifiable lake, but we're a major commercial center within that area. And I just think it would make more sense, if I may throw my argument out, to become part of the Lakes Region Committee as opposed to the North Country Council.
Okay. Well, thank you for throwing your opinion out. Item number ten is adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Mr. Ahern, and then sent in by Mr. Kelly at seven forty-three, we're adjourned.